Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Town Council to present the, for the Town Manager to present the FY21 budget. I'm going to ask Councilor Picciarelli to call the role.
Councilor Baze.
President.
Councilor Donato.
Present.
Councilor Gannon.
Present.
Councilor Palumbo.
Present.
Councilor Cornelis.
Present.
Councilor Feltner.
Present.
Councilor Woodland.
Present.
Council President Cederas.
Present.
Councilor Picciarelli.
Present. All present.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask the Town Manager to come to the podium to present the Fiscal Year 21 Town Budget. The Manager.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, all members of the Town Council. Tonight is an opportunity to present the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget, which covers the period of time July 1/20 through June 30th of 2021. All of the 95-page budget message along with the backup materials are on the town's website, which is www.wattontown-ma.gov. As I mentioned, the submission of the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget tonight was originally scheduled to be presented on Tuesday, April 28th, which would be six weeks ago tomorrow. So obviously, everyone's aware of the impact that the COVID-19 pandemic has caused with significant challenges with respect to lost revenue in addition to trying to determine moving forward with a submitted fiscal year 2021 budget. With respect to the 95-page budget message, which contains over 28,000 words, I don't intend to read each one of them this evening. Going to provide an overview of the various sections within the budget and then speak, very looking forward to having discussion with Town Council on the adoption of the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget. So again, back in October of 2019 pursuant to a Town Council Resolution and the provisions of the Watertown Home Rule Charter, we presented the Fiscal Year 2021 Plenary Budget Overview. The overview included a review of the town's financial condition, revenue and expenditure forecast, and other information relevant to the budget process. Those revenue and expenditure forecasts back in October 2019, it indicated a surplus of almost $557,000. During that evening, I again spoke to five basic tenants that the administration and Town Council has worked on and has continued to strive to provide the highest level of essential services possible with the most efficient utilization of resources, ensure that annual cost of operation be funded on an annual basis with current revenues, not defer maintenance or recognition of cost of capital equipment, facilities, and infrastructure to future years, remain focused on achieving the long-term goal of sound financial management and fiscal stability, and lastly, present a budget based on sound business practices. Subsequent to the presentation of the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Overview, Town Council had met in accordance with Watertown Home Rule Charter on the development of the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Policy Guidelines. We have listed on pages three and four the budget message, the top two ranked cost-saving revenue guidelines, as well as the top seven ranked program enhancement expenditure guidelines. On subsequent to that, as everyone knows, we were beginning in the middle of March with respect to the COVID-19 pandemic. We're all living in an unprecedented time. We're our world, our nation, and our community is faced with the threat of an international pandemic known as COVID-19. As you are aware, on March 10th, Governor Baker declared a state emergency in Massachusetts to support the Commonwealth's response to the outbreak of coronavirus. The state of emergency allowed the Commonwealth to take certain actions that may be necessary to manage the coronavirus outbreak. On March 15th, Governor Baker announced additional preventive measures to stem the outbreak of coronavirus in the Commonwealth, including the closing of our schools and shutting down of all restaurants and bars for on-premise consumption. On March 24th, Governor Baker issued an order requiring that all businesses and other organizations that do not provide COVID-19 essential services close their physical workplace and facilities to workers, customers, and the public, and gatherings of more than 10 people are prohibited throughout the Commonwealth. Given all of what I just mentioned, since mid-March, our schools have been closed and have been providing continuous remote learning. The Town Hall, the library, the senior center, and recreational facilities have been closed to the public. On May 18th, the Baker-Polito Administration released a report titled "Reopening Massachusetts", which details a four-phase strategy to responsibly reopening businesses and activities over the next few months while continuing to fight COVID-19. As of yesterday, the COVID numbers in Massachusetts are as follows. There's 103, 436 cases. Within Middlesex County, there's 22,754 cases, and unfortunately, to date, there's been 7,316 deaths statewide. In Watertown, we've got currently, we've got 396 confirmed cases of COVID-19, of which 343 of our community members have recovered from the virus. Four Town employees have had confirmed cases. Two of those employees are back to work, and Watertown has recorded 23 COVID fatalities. And certainly, as I mentioned many times since, over the last several weeks, our thoughts go out to the families as they mourn the loss of their loved ones. The next subject I'd like to talk about is the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Delay. Given the uncertainty of revenues, including state aid for the upcoming fiscal year as a result of COVID-19, on April 14th, the Honorable Town Council voted to delay the submission of the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget from April 28th to a date to be determined. Senator Will Brownsberger had provided the following on April 10th. The consuming challenge that the legislation must soon confront is budgeting for the next fiscal year. With the economy in freefall, state revenues are in freefall. Normally by now, both the House and Senate would be well along their way in developing proposed budgets. We have to restart the budget process from the beginning. It will be weeks before we can tell municipalities how much money they can plan on in state aid and begin to shape program plans for state programs. The next subject we'd like to discuss is Fiscal Year 2021 Lost Revenues and the CARES Act. Although the town has not been informed as to how much state aid will be forthcoming, it is necessary to submit tonight the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget, which begins on July 1, 2020. The following is a summary of lost revenue related to COVID-19 for Fiscal Year 2021. State aid is a reduction in tonight's budget of $2,640,612. That's a projected 20% reduction from Fiscal Year 20. Additionally, local receipts, there is a reduction of $1,364,049. You add those two numbers together, and our lost revenue related to COVID-19 for Fiscal Year 2021 is $4,4,661. With respect to the CARES Act, the Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, better known as the CARES Act, includes funds from Massachusetts governments to use to pay costs incurred in responding to the COVID-19 outbreak. The town has, the town has been informed Watertown will be eligible for $3,169,982 that could be distributed in Fiscal Year 2020 and 2021. Under federal law, eligible uses of the CARES Act monies must meet three conditions. They are as follows. Necessary expenditures incurred due to a public health emergency with respect to COVID-19. Funds may not be used to substitute for lost revenue. That's a key statement, and I'll speak to that in a moment. Not budgeted as of March 27, 2020, when the CARES Act was enacted, and may not supplant state or municipal spending. And lastly, incurred on or after March 1, 2020 up to December 30, 2020. I have spoken to Senator Brownsberger, Representative Heck, and Representative Lawn, and respectfully requested their assistance in advocating our federal delegation to amend the CARES Act to allow for these monies to be available for COVID revenue shortfalls. As I just mentioned, presently at this time, that $3.1 million, which would be significant help for the town of Watertown, would not be available for the lost revenue that I've just made. Tonight, the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget highlights are as follows. The first item is no layoffs. Although there is COVID-19-related reductions in state aid and local receipts totaling over $4 million, the submitted Fiscal Year 2020 Budget tonight contains no layoffs of Town and school employees. The next highlight is funding the Three Elementary Schools Project. As a result of the aggressive funding of the retirement system, financing of $170 million for the Three Elementary School Project continues in Fiscal Year 2021, and all of this project will be done within the confines of Proposition 2 and 1/2. The Fiscal Year 2021 Budget includes $6,473,376 for debt service related to the Three Elementary School Project. Borrowing for this project is being done in phases, and $64 million is scheduled to be borrowed in July or August 2020 as part of tomorrow night's proposed loan order totaling The next highlight is a fully funded retirement system as of July 1, 2020. Again, as a result of aggressive funding of our retirement system and based on the current Watertown Contributory Retirement Board's funding schedule, the town's unfunded pension liability will be fully funded on July 1, 20. The Fiscal Year 2021 Budget includes $14,588,179 for the pension appropriation. The next highlight is related to the funding plan to address the unfunded OPED liability. Once again, as a result of the aggressive funding of the retirement system, the unfunded other post-employment benefits or OPED liability of $115,037,000, the town's unfunded pension liability will be fully funded, will be full, continues, will be addressed with the continued implementation of the funding plan through Fiscal Year 2029, when the OPED liability is projected to be fully funded. Tonight, the Fiscal Year 2020 Budget includes $2,379,017 for the OPED appropriation. And lastly, the fifth bullet, if you will, a fifth highlight is initial funding of Informational Technology Assessment Recommendations. It's a follow-up to the Honorable Town Council's Budget Policy Guideline. Funding has been included in the submitted Fiscal Year 2021 Budget to begin addressing IT staffing needs and website content management as outlined in the Townwide Informational Technology Assessment. Also on page eight, there are 15 other continued program initiatives that are included in tonight's Fiscal Year 21 Budget. I'll touch on the first four, which are as follows. A very strong commitment to education. The enhanced funding of the pension and the OPED liability. Community policing, including 52 patrol offices, and fire departments sworn personnel levels at 87. The next section I'd like to briefly speak to is the bond market. As you know, back in November 2013, Standing and Poor's Rating Services upgraded the town's long-term rating from double A to triple A, which is the highest rate rating attainable. A year ago, just about a year ago tonight, on June 18th, the town received competitive bids for bond underwriters for $4.8 million, a 10-year general obligation bond. The winning bid on the bonds was an average rate of 1.384%, and prior to the bond sales, Standing and Poor's service affirmed the town's triple A long-term rating. Tonight, I'm the Forming Town Council. The town will be looking to go to bond market later this month to finance infrastructure improvements totaling $17.7 million. And in July of August of 2020, to finance $64 million for the Three Elementary School Project related to tomorrow night's proposed loan order. In Fiscal Year 2020 and in Fiscal Year 2021, the town will continue to utilize bond monies to finance infrastructure improvements, and it's imperative to continue the town's commitment to sound financial management and fiscal stability. I'd like to briefly speak about the Community Preservation Act. The Community Preservation Act, Mass. General Law's Chapter 44B, was enacted by the state legislation in 2000. As you know, the Watertown voters in November 2016 approved the Community Preservation Act with a 2% surcharge. On June of 2018, Town Council adopted an ordinance related to establishing the Community Preservation Committee. Subsequent to that, the, on December 18th, request for confirmation was made for the nine appointments. The first meeting in the Community Preservation Committee was held on February 21, 2019, and there have been 17 meetings to date, including regular scheduled monthly meetings and special meetings. Additionally, there's been a considerably considerable community outreach with one well-attended forum, three stakeholders-focused groups, an interactive engagement website, and a community survey. The Community Preservation Committee initiated a required planning process on November 4, 2019. It is anticipated that that process will be completed by the fall of 2020, which will allow for the CPA funding to be decimated through a project review and approve process to be initiated in late 2020 or early 2021. The culmination of this process will result in guidelines and criteria that will be used to make recommendations to the Honorable Town Council regarding the utilization of CPA funds for Fiscal Years 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021. Budgeting and accounting for the CPA funds will be done with a special revolving fund and is not included in the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget. The next item I wanted to talk to briefly is the Infrastructure Investment and Center Program, better known as IQ. As you know, back in June of 2017, the Honorable Town Council had a special meeting and adopted an order relative to an economic development proposal to finance certain public infrastructure improvements related to the Arsenal-Chiles Project. As you know, there was a submission to the Commonwealth, a joint application, including 10 projects that provided for roadway improvements, pedestrian walkways, bicycle paths, sewer and stormwater facilities, as well as infrastructure projects, both on the Town and DCR property. The proposed improvements would have implemented a number of goals and objectives of the town's comprehensive plan. Between April and September of last year, the Town and Athena discussed a potential amendment to the joint application that would have allowed for the construction of six of the 10 projects during Fiscal Year 2020. Prior to completion of these discussions, however, Athena announced that it agreed to sell the Arsenal camp, the Arsenal campus to Alexander Real Estate Equities. The property transferred on December 18, 2019. Currently, Alexander is gathering information to submit to the Commonwealth to answer the threshold question whether any future economic activity at the site could qualify for IQ funding. If the answer is in the affirmative, Alexander will then be required to submit a new economic development proposal to the town for approval and subsequent submission to the Commonwealth. The next topic I want to talk briefly about is state aid. Back in October 2019, during the Fiscal Year 2021 Plenary Budget Overview, the Fiscal Year 2021 state aid revenue amount was projected to be level funded at $13,205,612, which is the current Fiscal Year 20 amount. As I mentioned earlier, a few minutes ago, the Fiscal Year 2021 state aid is projected to be a 20% reduction from the Fiscal Year 2020 amount. Therefore, tonight, the Fiscal Year 2021 state aid is $10,565, a decrease to the $2.6 million. If the Fiscal Year 2021 state aid revenues change, adjustments will be made at that time. What we've done now is on the next, on pages 12 to 25 of the 95-page budget message, you'll see 14 pages shows the background and the progression of the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget. A chart on the last page, if you will, on page 25, the 14th table, outlines spending from Fiscal Year 2009 up to and including tonight's submitted Fiscal Year 2021 Budget. Page 26 of the budget message is to speak to the financial highlights of the budget. Tonight, the submitted Fiscal Year 2021 Budget includes revenue and expenditures, each totaling $152,442,000, which represents an increase of $2.5 million and a 1.69% increase from the Fiscal Year 2020 revised budget. The, what we've done is providing a chart showing the 12 fiscal year budgets, beginning of Fiscal Year 10 through tonight's budget, that shows the growth over the 12 fiscal years, which resulted in a growth of $56.7 million over the 12 fiscal years, or 59.30, or 4.94% for the 12-year average. It's important to point out that on April 23, 2019, when I presented the Fiscal Year 2020 Budget at the Richard E. Mistrangelo Council Chamber, the Fiscal Year 20 Budget was an increase of $5.5 million versus the $2.5 million tonight. And additionally, the increase for Fiscal Year 19 to 20 back in April 2019 was a 3.89% versus what's being recommended tonight, which is a 1.69%. The submitted Fiscal Year 2020 Budget utilized a local property tax and includes estimated new growth of $3.1 million. Real estate and personal property taxes of $122,210,655 represents 80.17% of the Fiscal Year 2020 revenues. By comparison, back in April 2019, when we submitted the Fiscal Year 2020 Budget, real estate and personal properties represented 77.62%. So you'll see that there's more reliance, excuse me, on the real estate and personal property taxes, given the local aid and the local receipts going down. What we've done, the Chairman of the Board of Assessors has provided a chart on page 28, which shows a community comparison for Fiscal Year 2020 of six surrounding communities. Watertown's average tax bill is less than Arlington, Newton, and Belmont, and it's more than Cambridge, Boston, and Waltham. With respect to, we spoke on the real estate and personal property taxes, local aid. On page 29, I'd like to talk about the third category of revenue, and that's local receipts and other financing sources. The revenues tonight include a projected decrease in local receipts of the $1,364,49 below the current Fiscal Year 20 amount. Five items of note are the motor vehicle excise tax is reduced from the current budget by $435,000, Medicaid reimbursement by $320,000, ambulance fees by $250,000, hotel excise by $175,000, and mail's excise by $137,500. And the last revenue category is the other financing sources. That is going up by $430,324 from the current budget, primarily as a result of the utilization of an additional $1,250,000 of free cash and the reductions of $621,500 from the Collective Bonding Stabilization Fund and $100,000 from the Park and Meter Fund. So what you see on page 29, the middle of that, those are the four major categories of our revenue, and I've just outlined those. Additionally, on page 29, the significant changes in expenditures as compared to the Fiscal Year 20 revised budget. There are 14 items listed here. I'll only speak to three of them. With respect to the debt service, the Three Elementary School Project, that's going up five, almost $5.5 million over the current budget. Other post-employment benefits are going down by $5.6 million over the current budget. And then lastly, the pension appropriation is going up $1,407,000. With respect to the capital improvement program pursuant to the provisions of the Home Rule Charter and the Town Council Resolution on the Fiscal Year 21 Budget, we submitted the proposed, excuse me, the proposed Fiscal Year 2021, 2025 Capital Improvement Program on February 4, 2020. Subsequent to that, the Council's Committee on Budget and Fiscal Oversight met several times and developed conceptual recommendations for presentation to Town Council. On March 10th, the Town Council adopted 28 conceptual recommendations on the Fiscal Year 2021, the 2025 Capital Improvement Program. We've listed all those 28 recommendations on page 30 to 34. On page 35 of the budget message, the submitted Fiscal Year 2021, 2025 Capital Improvement Program is included in tonight's submitted Fiscal Year 2021 Budget and incorporates all those adopted conceptual recommendations. The Honorable Town Council's ongoing Budget Policy Guideline 1B reads as follows. Capital expenditures. In order to maintain and improve infrastructure, facilities, and equipment, the town should seek to make annual capital expenditures, including debt and exclusive school building for the future initiative funding and enterprise funds equal to at least 7.5% to 8% of the operating budget. Tonight's budget includes capital expenditures representative 7.28% of the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget. The Fiscal Year 2021 General Fund Capital Improvement Program totals $524,150,500, which is an increase of a little over $21 million from the Fiscal Year 20 to 24 Capital Improvement Program. Potential renovation reconstruction of school facilities totals $353,500,000, which is included as subcategory. That breakdown of $353,500 is as follows. The Three Elementary School Project has a remaining dollar amount of $170 million, but within the Fiscal Year 2021 to 2025 of $153,500. And the high school project is a $200,000, high school project and related costs is a $200,000, $200 million item. The, moving to page 43 of the budget message, talk about the school capital projects. The Fiscal Year 2021 Capital Improvement Program includes funding of various school improvements totaling the $370,824. I just touched upon the $353,500. I just touched upon the three fifty three, five hundred. There are bond remodeling for the middle and their Philip School totaling almost nine point three million dollars. Tax revenue over the five fiscal year of a million, two seventy six. And then technology at the various school buildings are half a million dollars. The uh really briefly speak to the building for the future initiative, the three elementary school project. As you recall, back in March of two thousand seventeen, the Honorable School Committee approved the award of a contract AI three. To assist when moving forward the building for the future initiative. Building for the future is a car comprehensive forward looking initiative to address learning, operational and capacity improvements to all of our schools. Uh subsequent to that, in March of two thousand eighteen, it was necessary necessary to move forward the establishment. Of a school building committee, thirteen appointments were made to the committee. Uh again, met back in March of two thousand eighteen, including the Honorable Town Council President, Max Sideris. Town Council Vice President Vincent Pichorelli, School Committee Member John Ports and School Community Member Lindsay Moskowitz. The committee is the representative of the town in all dealings with the architects. The school building committee. Has worked tirelessly to review conceptual design out options for the three elementary schools. In order to, in an effort to ultimately select the preferred design option that is in the best interest of the town. The taxpayers and the successful education of our children. The school building committee worked with AI three and completed uh three different, uh four different phases. Beginning with the schematic design, which was completed in February, two thousand nineteen, and the last one was construction. Uh construction contracting bidding, which was to be held in this spring. Uh as we mentioned previously, back in February four, we formally announced after significant discussion with the school committee. The school building committee and the town council. The town will be leasing Saint Jude School in Waltham on July one, twenty through June thirty, twenty twenty three. For swing space for the three elementary school project. This decision will allow the Coniff and the Lowell Schools to be completed two years earlier than originally projected. The Coniff and Hosmer Schools would build it as a single collective package in order to receive the most competitive pricing and to ensure the two schools. Will receive the same building systems and materials and allow for management of a single contractor for these two projects. Tomorrow evening, the Honorable Town Council will hold a public hearing and vote on a proposal order totaling one hundred and three million, four fifty five. In an order to move forward with the construction of a new Hosmer and Coniff Elementary School. Construction would begin at the Coniff and Hosmer during this summer, and the Coniff School will be completed by the end of calendar year twenty twenty one. And the Hosmer School will be completed by the summer of twenty twenty two. Uh the, as I've stated many times in the last several years, the result of the aggressive funding of the retirement system. Financing of this one hundred and seventy million dollars for the three elementary school project will be done within the confines of proposition two and a half. With respect to the high school, on March ten, uh twenty eight of two thousand seventeen, the town council had submitted a Massachusetts School Building Authority Core Program. That was the fourth year submission to the MSBA looking for their assistance in building of a new high school. On December of two thousand eighteen, the MSBA voted to invite the town to partner. Uh in conducting a feasibility study for the Watertown High School. On May of two thousand nineteen, the MSBA approved the town selection of campus. Project management as the owner's project management manager for the high school project. Subsequently, a contract totaling three hundred and forty three, almost three hundred and forty four thousand dollars was executed. Back on September, uh last year, September seventeen, two thousand nineteen. The MSBA designer selection panel voted AI three architect LLC is the first ranked. Uh firm for the diet designer service for the high school, a contract was subsequently. Uh. Executed with AI three, and the school building committee has been working with AI three on the following phases, the preliminary design. Preferced schematic study and report, which would be submitted in February of twenty twenty one. And the schematic design would be submitted in October of twenty twenty one. The preliminary design program had been submitted last in February. Uh for the next step to move forward. After completion of all those three steps, the town would be seeking a debt exclusion vote from the taxpayers of Watertown in calendar year twenty twenty one. Uh and as follow up to budget policy guideline council, two hundred thousand dollars has been included in the fiscal year twenty twenty one. The twenty twenty five capital improvement uh program. With respect to streets and sidewalk on page fifty two of the budget message. Uh street and sidewalk message maintenance is one of the top priorities in all of the town councils fiscal year two thousand nine. And through fiscal year twenty twenty one budget policy guidelines. Within the fiscal year twenty one, the twenty five capital improvement program. Uh over a hundred and seven million point five is designated for street and sidewalk improvements. The fiscal year twenty twenty one general fund budgets being submitted tonight includes a million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars. To augment projected chapter ninety monies uh for street and sidewalk improvements. So beginning in fiscal year nineteen ninety nine and through tonight's submitted budget. The Honorable Town Council has approved sixteen, almost sixteen point three million dollars for street and sidewalk improvements. Uh which is an average of over seven hundred and seven thousand dollars for each of those twenty three fiscal years. All of those monies are all appropriated within the confines of proposition two and a half. Uh with respect to the five future loan orders included within the fiscal year twenty one to twenty five capital improvement program. There are loan orders totaling twenty million, nine hundred thousand dollars beginning in fiscal year twenty twenty one through fiscal year twenty twenty five. In summary, beginning in fiscal year two thousand thirteen and continuing through fiscal year twenty twenty five. The Honorable Town Council has or is planning on authorizing loan audits for street and sidewalk improvements. Tolling forty seven point nine million dollars over the thirteen fiscal years. All again, within the confines of proposition two and a half. On page fifty four, water sewer enterprise budgets, the fiscal year twenty twenty one. Warren Sewer Enterprise Budgets total nineteen million, seventy thousand, two fifty, which is a decrease of little over two hundred and seventy thousand dollars from the current budget. The fiscal year twenty twenty budget includes funding of eighteen full time employees. Funding has been included for a management analyst in the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget. To assist the Department of Public Works with items related to the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget policy guideline two A and ongoing budget policy guidelines. Additionally, with respect on page fifty eight, the fifty six, I'm sorry, the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty one to twenty. Uh twenty five water sewer enterprise funds totals twenty four million, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Again, and that's included in within tonight's fiscal year twenty twenty one submitted budget. On page fifty eight, I want to speak briefly to the Divisional Local Services Financial Management Review. As you know, they perform, Division Local Services performed a full financial management review back in August of two thousand thirteen. The primary recommendation of the financial management review was to create a deputy town manager position to consider organizing a finance department. Uh department preferably preferably run by a proposed deputy. Uh town manager back there, the council had decided back in April fourteen to allow the town manager to identify existing department heads. Would be given additional responsibility, authority and compensation to assist the town manager and various. Uh general management task and special projects thus and back in July of two thousand fourteen, Stephen McGoon. Was appointed assistant town manager, continued to serve as a director of community development and planning. Additionally, as a follow up to that, town council also had authorized, allow the town manager to appoint the town auditor. As assistant town manager for finance to oversee. And monitor all financial management staff assists with budget preparation and undertake other financial responsibilities as assigned by the manager. Again, as a follow up to that council vote in January, two thousand fifteen, Mr. Tracy was appointed assistant town manager for finance. To continue to serve as the town auditor as well. Top priority of the Honorable Town Council's fiscal year twenty twenty one ranked program enhancement expenditure budget policy guideline. Is two A and it reads as follows. Enhance the capabilities of the town manager's office with consideration given to creating a deputy town manager position. As previously recommended in the Divisional Local Services Financial Management Review. With responsibilities to include managing communication content and enhancing public engagement and other duties is assigned. Given the impacts of COVID nineteen on the Commonwealth's and the town's budgets. Funding of this guideline, along with many of the Honorable Town Council's fiscal year twenty twenty one budget policy guidelines. Has not been included in the submitted fiscal year twenty one, twenty twenty one budget. With respect to the general government section of the budget, the submitted fiscal year twenty twenty one budget appropriation is six million, seven sixteen. Five forty seven, which is a projected increase of over five hundred and forty four thousand dollars over the current fiscal year twenty appropriation. The fiscal year twenty budget, general government budget include funding of fifty full time and seven part time employees. Within the fifteen general government departments. Tonight, funding has been included for two positions in the informational technology department. Therefore, the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget includes funding of fifty two uh full time. Uh positions and seven part time positions within the fourteen general government budgets were going down one. As the town hall maintenance has been merged with with the fiscal year twenty twenty one Department of Public Budgets. A Department of Public Building Budget. Town council uh reserved tonight of a million, three seventy five is a decrease of a million, three forty four, six twenty nine over the current. Fiscal year twenty twenty revised appropriation. And provides for unforeseen additional needs and collective bargaining. Within tonight's budget, the election commission is scheduled to conduct the following election exercises. The preliminary election would be on Tuesday, September one, twenty twenty, and the state election would be on Tuesday, November three, twenty twenty. With respect to community development planning, which begins on page fifty nine. Uh in accordance with several of the Honorable Town Council's fiscal year twenty eighteen through twenty twenty one budget policy guidelines. Community development planning will continue implementation of key recommendations of the comprehensive plan. The plan deals with a broad perspective of issues, encourages town government and citizens to work in concert toward common goals. I'm going to briefly speak to some of the budget policy guidelines community development is dealing with. The first one is two one C and that and that's related to uh the uh moving forward funding to develop the Watertown Climate and Energy Plan. Department continues to pursue grants, including a a current pending application for phase two of the municipal vulnerability preparedness, MVB. Program, this grant will provide funding for both consultant services to create the climate and energy plan that will guide the town in preparation. For impacts of climate change and implementation of some initial actions. Additionally, uh the Honorable Town Council's Budget Policy Guideline two F is related to Transportation Management Association, the TMA. TMA and creation of a pilot shuttle program, the town staff continues to work with the TMA and its members. Uh on a number of activities to reduce single occupant vehicle travel. Staff is working diligently with a number of private entities and have established service for a number of entities on the Arsenal Street Corridor. And received the grant to establish service in the Pleasant Street Corridor. Pleasant Street service should start this winter to coincide with the expected return of rush hour traffic. Uh just moving forward with the community development planning back, the fiscal year twenty twenty budget policy guideline two K. Uh read as follows, enhance the capabilities of the Department of Community Development Planning by adding resources and redeploying additional resources. Since fiscal year twenty seventeen and through fiscal year twenty, funding has been included. In the following positions within community development, assistant building inspector, a transportation planner, code enforcement officer. A senior environmental planner and a part time principal account clerk. It is expected that community development planning will be fully staffed soon for the first time in years, which will provide the ability to implement. A number of priorities of the council without staff having to cover for other responsibilities. The Honorable Town Council fiscal year twenty twenty one budget policy guideline. Uh two I and two N reads as follows, enhance the capabilities of the Department of Public. Uh community development planning by adding resources or redeploying additional resources. And then implementing the anticipated public art plan and identify funding sources. So follow up to those guidelines, Mr. McGoon uh had requested additional funding for the following items. A planner and public art funding, again, given the impacts of COVID nineteen on the Commonwealth. And the town's budget, these additional funding requests were not considered for inclusion in the submitted fiscal year twenty twenty one budget. With respect to open space and recreation plan, town council adopted the open space and recreation plan on April, two thousand fifteen. Our view of the recommendations for implementation is ongoing. Goal one of the plan is to improve the amount, accessibility and condition of Watertown's recreation resources. And objective one dash one is to acquire open space, particularly spaces that. Would enhance and leverage existing resources to under represent sections of the town. Uh the, as you recall, the Town Council's Committee on Human Services. Uh met with the Conservation Commission and Executive Session to prioritize proposals for possible open space acquisition. The town council will be meeting an executive session to further discuss this endeavor. And additionally, conceptual recommendation twenty eight, the Honorable Town Council's conceptual recommendation number twenty eight. In the fiscal year twenty one to twenty five CAIP, which was adopted on March ten of twenty twenty, reads as follows. Concur with the town manager's recommendation to the, for the town council to continue discussion on the following items. Reuse of town buildings, the former North Branch Library and the former police station, record storage management related issues. Department of Public Works staging area and the acquisition of land for open space and indoor recreation use. As a follow up, a budgetary plan to meet the identified need, acquisition for of land. Uh for open space and our recreation use will be developed subsequent to final policy direction from the Honorable Town Council and input. From the Community Preservation Committee in accordance with fiscal year twenty twenty one budget policy guideline two K. Now on to informational technology. The the current fiscal year twenty twenty budget uh was. Uh which was adopted back in April, uh back in June of last year, told a little shy of seven, eight hundred thousand dollars, or seven hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. The Honorable Town Council's fiscal year nineteen budget policy guideline. Uh read as follows, which has moved forward a townwide informational technology assessment. To review the acquisition, distribution and management of IT resources, including staffing levels and positions required to support the town's IT environment. Improve the functionality of the town's website and approve communication with residents. To follow up to that town budget policy guidelines on March twenty six of nineteen, council appropriated monies. To do the townwide informational technology assessment. On November, two thousand nineteen, the town council had further updated their budget policy guideline. Uh and reads in part is to consider the recommendations of the townwide informational technology assessment to review. The acquisition, distribution and management of IT resources. On December twenty twenty three of last year, the IT assessment, uh which was collected, conducted by Plant Moran. Was forwarded to the Honorable Town Council for their review. And the following are some excerpts from the ninety nine page IT assessment. The first one is one point four of the report, which is foundation opportunities. Seven foundation opportunities were identified that represent a commonality among. Uh many discreet observations made through the IT assessment process. The foundation opportunities are as follows, enhance IT governance. Document standards, policy procedures, address IT staffing needs. Formalize website content management procedures, procedures, pursue platform organization, including self service. And workflow automation, approve the help desk and toys, tools and establish service level agreements. Uh the observations contributing factors and the associated recommend that recommended actions. Have been aggregated to depict the full scope of efforts that are necessary to address the gaps in opportunities. First one to briefly speak to is address the IT staffing needs as indicated within the uh townwide uh IT assessment. Reads as follows, uh the challenges were identified related to the adequacy. Of the competency and staffing levels necessary to move forward, move the town, the schools forward and adopt new emerging innovative technologies. As stated in the IT assessment, overall, both the town and schools are IT support organizations are understaffed. And compared to, in comparison to their industry IT staffing benchmarks, having. having skilled and well-trained IT staff are an asset to the town. Then we spoke briefly about recommended actions regarding IT staffing levels. And then it was in, on page 64, talked about the website content management, again, another recommendation. So as mentioned earlier tonight, on page seven of the highlights of the fiscal year 2021 budget, funding has been included in the submitted fiscal year 2021 budget to begin addressing IT staffing needs and website content management with the following positions and added resources. A chief information officer, an IT infrastructure leader, a website and social media leader, increased funding of contracted services, and increased funding of equipment replacement. Therefore, tonight, the submitted fiscal year 2021 appropriation for Information Technology Department is $1,193,498, which is an increase of almost $396,000 over the current budget. Information Technology improvements totaling $575,000 from the fiscal year 2021 CIP will be included in future loan orders or transfer of funds requests. With respect to the Department of Public Buildings, as you recall, town council had agreed to the creation of a joint municipal and school facilities department in accordance with Mass General laws, chapter 71, section 37m. That was executed back in July of 2018. So tonight, the fiscal year 2021 appropriation is $1,013,656 and is $532,468 above the fiscal year 2020 budget as the town hall maintenance budget of $346,016 has been merged with the fiscal year 2021 Department of Public Buildings. The fiscal year 20 school budget and various other town department budgets include funding related to Department of Public Buildings. Discussions will continue on how to best proceed emerging these funds from other departments in the Department of Public Buildings. Briefly, the state and county charges for fiscal year 2021 is $2,816,632, which is an increase of $99,154. Of note, the MBTA assessment of $2,415,906 represents 86% of the appropriation of state and county charges. With respect to retirement benefits, as of January 1, the unfunded pension liability, the retirement system was $24.5 million, which was a decrease of $91, almost $42 million from the unpensioned liability back on January 1 of 2010 of $66.5 million. The council's budget policy, ongoing budget policy guideline 2, 1C is related to pension liability and other post-employment benefits and reads in part as follows. In order to achieve long-term financial stability, meet the town's obligation to its employees and retirees, and maintain bond, favorable bond ratings to council, the retirement board, the town manager will work to address the town's unfunded pension liability and other post-employment benefits or rolpit. Town's strong commitment to address the unfunded pension liability is evidenced by the pension appropriation was increased from fiscal year 2009 over 10 years of, to a percentage point of 152.34%. The funding level of the pension appropriation for fiscal year 20 was $13,186,13, which was a decrease of 5.3 over the fiscal year 19 appropriation. The contributory retirement system has a funding schedule review conducted as of January 1, the, and has a retirement system being fully funded as of July 1, 2020. So tonight, Mr. President, members of the council, the recommended funding level of the pension appropriation for fiscal year 2021 is $14,588,179, which is an increase of $1.4 million over the current appropriation. Of note, the retirement system had a market return of 18.6 in calendar year 2019 and is currently conducting a finance, a funding schedule review as of January 1, 2020. That being said, given the uncertainty of the financial market as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, funding of the retirement system will need to be monitored. On page 68, we provided the funding for the next four fiscal years related to the pension appropriation. With respect to other post-employment benefits, back in the, on, subsequent to an actuary evaluation report being done as of June 30, 2017, Mr. Sherman met with, or the Sherman Actuary Services met with the town council and back on, adopted recommendations back in January 2019. As a follow-up, the town council adopted an order establishing the Watertown OPED Trust Fund by adopting Mass General laws, chapter 332B, section 20, designated the town treasurer as the trustee of the fund, and approved the use of Mass General laws 203C, the Massachusetts Proven Investment Act. Additionally, one of the requests of that town council action back in January 2019 was establishment of a funding plan, which we announced in last year's budget, began on fiscal year, in fiscal, in this current year fiscal year 20, with the OPED liability being paid off as of fiscal year 2029. As you mentioned in the budget, a year ago, the projected funding will, once another study is done, will be adjusted. Any issue related to the pension trust would be moving forward there. Additionally, on page 71, we're providing the, the four fiscal years for the projected OPED. Additionally, the town will have another actuary evaluation as of June 30, 2020. The next one on page 71 of the budget message is insurance employee benefits. As you know, the town was one of 11 Massachusetts communities to join the Massachusetts, the Group Insurance Commission back on July 1 of 2019 through June 30 of 15, working with the Public Employee Committee. There was another agreement back, reached in May of 2014 for a success agreement, utilizing the Group Insurance Commission insurance through June 30 of 2021. This decision has been extremely critical. It allows for the town to continue providing quality health insurance to its employees and retirees. Additionally, the town has been a beneficiary of the town's, the Group Insurance Commission's proven track record of cost containment and stability. You'll see on page 25 of the budget message, the fiscal year 21 appropriation went up $3.6 million over 12 fiscal years, which is average of 2.27% over those 12 fiscal years. This track record will continue to greatly assist in the development of future budgets while striving to provide the highest levels of essential services to the citizens while utilizing taxpayers' dollars as effectively as possible. So tonight, the fiscal year 21 budget, the town's cost of health insurance is $14,365,186, which is an increase of $858,539 over the revised fiscal year 2020 budget. On page 72, we're providing the increases for town health insurance, school, retiree costs. And lastly, pursuant to provisions of the memorandum of agreement with the PEC, the town and the Public Employee Committee will need, will meet to discuss the upcoming expiration of the parties' agreement and extension beyond its current June 30, 2020 expiration. The next part of the budget, want to talk about is public safety. The first department is the police department. The fiscal year 2020 budget, the current budget includes funding of 70 uniformed police officers, including 52 patrol officers, nine dispatches, four civilian employees, and crossing guards for various locations throughout the town. The fiscal years 2009 and 2010, funding was eliminated for eight police officer position, four in fiscal year 2009, and four in fiscal year 10. In fiscal years 2015, 2017, 2018, and 2019, 2020, five of the eight positions were restored. The current budget we submitted last April include the funding of one additional police officer above the fiscal year 2019 level. This additional police officer has enabled the department to assign a detective full-time to the Southern Middlesex County Drug Task Force, which has been a beneficiary to the department and our community. An effort to restore two of the eight positions that were reduced back in fiscal year 2009 and 2010. Additional funding was a request for two additional positions totaling almost, totaling $190,000. Given the impacts of COVID-19 on the Commonwealth and the town budgets, the funding request was not considered for inclusion in the submitted fiscal year 2021 budget. So tonight, the submitted fiscal year 2021 budget for the police department includes funding of 70 uniform, 70 uniformed police officers, including 52 patrol officers, nine dispatches, four civilian employees, and crossing guard for various locations throughout the town. Town, in essence, the same staffing levels that are currently budgeted in fiscal year 20. So tonight, the submitted fiscal year 21 appropriation for the police department is $10,308,183, and that's $69,482 above the, above the, above the current fiscal year 2020 budget. Monies have been included for a proposed fiscal year 20 to 22 collective bargaining agreements with police association and police supervisors. If agreements aren't reached prior to the Honorable Town Council's consideration and action on the fiscal year 21 budget, amendment would be brought forward, moving those monies to town council reserve. Police department remains committed to expanding community policing philosophy throughout the department with focus on creating more partnerships with the community, provide training to the police department on the six pillars of President Obama's task force on 21st century policing, and maintaining and enhancing the trust in the Watertown police offices by all members and groups of our community. The six pillars are as follows, building trust and legitimacy. The second is policy and oversight. The third is technology and social media. The third is community policing and crime reduction. The fifth is training and education. And the sixth pillar of community policing is office safety and wellness. Additionally, in fiscal year 2021, the police department will join in partnership with the Communities for Restorative Justice Program. Police department will also continue placing a school resource officer in the middle and the high school for 2021 school year. And will continue the Police Mountain Bicycle Program, a community policing initiative restored in fiscal year 2017. Additionally, the police department, in conjunction with the retirement and recreation department, will continue their efforts to restore the cops and kids program. And funding of the supplies and services in fiscal year 21 is $665,688, which will be the 10th year of occupancy of the new police station. Additional funding request for vehicle replacement account hasn't been included. It's my intention to address the funding request prior to the end of fiscal year 20 utilizing available department, police department monies with the approval of the Honorable Town Council. That's the police department. With respect to the, the next department I want to talk about is the fire department. On page 77, in fiscal year 20, the fire chief requested additional funding for the following items. Staff a, a basic life support, BLS ambulance, and run two ambulances by increasing minimum staffing from 17 to 19 per shift. Create an assistant fire chief position or upgrade the staff service officer to assistant fire chief. Upgrade one firefighter as to a lieutenant to provide assistance to the fire protection, to fire prevention efforts related to development and department technology. And then lastly, increase the health, safety, and wellness of our employees by expanding current programs. Monies were included in the submitted fiscal year 2020 budget for all of those priorities. During fiscal year 20, the, the fire department was only able to staff the second ambulance from July, the first six months of the fiscal year to the end of December 31, 2019. The overtime monies approved to provide, the service was exhausted after six months due to staffing issues during the fiscal year. Revenue projections were on target, but the cost to run the enhanced ambulance service for two ambulances was, was more than anticipated. In April 2020, the Honorable Town Council approved an agreement with the Firefighters Association for three-year contract covering July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2022. So tonight, the submitted fiscal year 21 budget for the fire department includes funding of 87 firefighters in two civilian positions operating from three fire stations, providing basic life support and advanced life support to all of our residents and visitors. The 87 uniformed firefighters include the fire chief, one assistant fire chief, four deputy chiefs, seven captains, 16 lieutenants, and 58 firefighters. So tonight's appropriation for the fire department is $11,285,841, which is an increase a little over $26,000 from the current fiscal year 20 budget. With respect to the Department of Public Works on page 78, the recommended fiscal year 2021 Department of Public Works budget exclusive of waste disposal of snow and ice is $5,871,584, which is an increase of $102.7,000 over the revised fiscal year 20 Department of Public Budget. The fiscal year 20 budget includes the same funding that we have currently for fiscal year 2020. With respect to, I want to touch on a couple of things within the Department of Public Works. First one is on page 81, briefly speak to the Mount Auburn Street Complete Streets Project. The department submitted a 25% design for the Mount Auburn Street Project to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, a Mass DOT, in December 2019, based on the concept endorsed by the Honorable Town Council. An updated cost estimate was developed to accompany the upcoming, updated draft design. The project is now estimated over $28 million, doing part to regional escalations and construction costs and costs associated with the complete streets in Massachusetts MBTA's canary wire designs. Department continues to, the Department of Public Works continues to meet the, to work to meet the timeline of the Boston Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization fiscal year 2022 to 2023 tip funding. The other item is on page 82 of the budget message, and that's the Waverly Avenue Design. As you know, $1.5 million is included in the fiscal year 2020 CIP for long streets, collector reconstruction at the recommendation of the Public Works Department. The Honorable Town Council voted to proceed with the design of Waverly Ave from Orchard Street to the town line at Belmont Street. Department has begun important traffic and speed data, perform field survey work, and developing conceptual designs, design and projected bidding, project bidding expected to be completed in fiscal year 2021. With respect to snow and ice, the fiscal year 2021 appropriation is $1,500,000, which was the original fiscal year 21, 20 appropriation, and an increase of $85,000 over the revised fiscal year 20 appropriation. As you recall, Mr. President, members of the council, the Third Amendment to the Willabraye Service Agreement was adopted by town council, become effective in July 1, 20. This amendment extends the service provided by Willabraye for additional five years through fiscal year 2025. This agreement, this agreement ensures the town has solid waste disposal service for another five years. The fiscal year 2021 waste disposal appropriation is $3,388,265, which is 201,000 above the current appropriation and $151,000 over the fiscal year 12 appropriation, 2012 appropriation, which was some nine fiscal years ago. The, a budgetary plan to meet the identified need for public work staging space will develop in subsequent to final Honorable Town Council policy guidance in accordance with budget policy guideline fiscal year 2021 guide, guideline 2M. With respect to the Health and Human Services Health Council and Aging and Veteran Services, the funding has been continued in the Health Department for both environment and community health service towards fulfillment of the mission. towards fulfillment of the mission, mission of the Health Department to protect and promote health, prevent disease and disability, and access and improve the health issues of the community. Some of the new things that the Health Department will be dealing with in fiscal year twenty-one is the adoption of the biotech regulations. Will add new responsibilities along with an updated noise ordinance. The Health Department is also engaged in reviewing, developing new strategies to address climate change and environmental health impact of the community. The COVID nineteen pandemic has added significant responsibilities and challenges to the Health Department in responding to this global public health crisis. Planning, the planned service for fiscal year twenty twenty-one includes the continuation of the full-time social services resource specialists hours to provide residents of Watertown and their families with a single access point to a wide variety of social services as well as assessment, information, review, referral, and short-term intervention and follow-up is necessary. As you know, Mr. President, members of the council, back in October of two thousand fifteen, the Town Council proclaimed that communities a purple-hot community. The Veteran Services is currently performing a thorough process to update and identify benefits to our veterans community. Would like to speak on Mr. Patrick George's efforts during the COVID nineteen. Veteran Services remain open and available during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Benefit claims were uninterrupted and were processed through fax, email, or other alternative methods in accordance with social distancing guidelines. Other initiatives include food drops, drop-offs, donation of soup, of soap, and hand sanitizer and phone call check-ins on a regular basis. In addition to the day-to-day operation, the Veteran Services partnered with the Watertown Cable Access TV to record an interview series for the Memorial Day, which include veterans and other community members to outline the importance of the Memorial Day. With respect to the Council on Aging, as you recall, back in fiscal year two thousand nineteen, the Town Council had provided funding so a part-time program services assistant increased the hours to make casework our full-time position and additional day of bus drivers for seniors. And the, due to the continuous development of program offers being made to meet the diverse needs of the senior visitors, monies were included in the fiscal year twenty budget, the current budget, to bring the program coordinator position to full-time status. The fiscal year twenty, the Council on Aging Senior Center made additional building improvements that include replacing the carpet throughout the building and installing automatic door openers for both restrooms. In March, the COVID nineteen pandemic eliminated the way the Council on Aging provided the programs and shuttle bus services to the seniors, but outreach continued by all staff and phone count, calls made for well-being and letters, cards, and monthly senior news production publications. Additionally, as you know, the Watertown Food Pantry has continued the operation to serve our residents in need, more than doubling its operation. So in summary, with respect to the Health and Human Services, Mr. President, members of the council, regarding the Health Department budget, the Council on Age budget, and the Veteran Services budget, the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget includes funding of the same staffing levels fiscal year twenty. With respect to the Recreation in the Johnny Ryan Skating Arena, the Recreation Budget is three hundred and seventy-two thousand, three oh one, and the Johnny Ryan Skating Arena Budget is four sixty-seven, six ninety-five. The, as you are aware, the the COVID nineteen pandemic has caused the town to cancel all recreation programs and closed the town's recreation facilities since the middle of twenty twenty. Given the COVID nineteen pandemic, and as a follow-up to a recommendation from the Recreation Director and the Director of Public Health, Camp Acquasic is going to be canceled for the twenty twenty season out of an abundance of caution to protect the health and safety of the camp participants and staff. Although Camp Acquasic won't be held this summer, the Recreation Department is researching creative ways to offer passive and active recreation program opportunities for this summer that would adhere to Governor Baker's Phase Four requirements. And additionally, on page eighty-eight, have listed nine projects, Recreation Programs. There are nine projects are included in the fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-five Capital Improvement Program totaling almost ten point five million dollars. On page eighty-nine, I want to talk about the library. That's where we're here tonight. Uses of the library continues to rise since the expansion and renovation in two thousand and six. Circulation in fiscal year two thousand and nineteen of physical materials and electronic downloads were almost six hundred and eighty thousand, and library visits averaged over thirty-six thousand per month. Library programs were attended by over forty-seven thousand participants, and the study room was booked over fifty-four hundred times. In fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, the Library Director and the Library Trustees requested additional funding for the following items: Local History Preservation Project and a Historical Map Restoration. Both of those requests were funded in the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget. In fiscal year twenty, the Library Director and the Library Board of Trustees had requested additional funding of the following items: Library Programming, Part-Time Hatch Assistant, the Local History Collection Preservation Project Year Two. All of those requests for additional funding in fiscal year twenty were funded. With respect in this fiscal year, moving forward tonight, in fiscal year twenty-one, the Library Director and the Library Board of Trustees requested additional funding for the following items: A part-time local historian librarian, a community outreach librarian, and additional electronic materials. Monies have been included in tonight's submitted fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one library budget to fund the part-time local history, like local history librarian. Funding for a permanent part-time local history librarian is a logical extension of the historic, historical projects that began in fiscal year twenty seventeen with the preservation and restoration, restoration of the library's historical maps. And that's kind of been over the whole process and the continued funding. Acknowledge the Library Director and the Library Trustees for their efforts since beginning in fiscal year two thirty, two thousand and seventeen for the preservation and the restoration of the historical artifacts of the town. Tonight, the recommended funding of the library for fiscal year twenty twenty-one is three million, two thirty-three, three sixty-seven, and it's in compliance with the municipal appropriation requirement, OMA, set by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, and is a little over seventy-eight thousand dollars above the fiscal year twenty budget. As a follow-up to request from the Library Director and the Library Board of Trustees, late fees will be eliminated beginning July one for past and future borrowing of materials. There is mounting evidence that late fees pose a barrier to utilizing the library resources for some in the community, and it is not a deterrent. There was also evidence that once a library goes fine-free, materials that have been kept overdue are returning to libraries, and the library usage actually increases. The library will enforce a policy that blocks cards with items overdue for an extended period. Will continue to collect the replacement costs for lost and unreturned items. Prior to COVID nineteen, the Watertown Free Public Library has been open more hours per week than any other library in the Commonwealth, including Friday night hours to seven P M., expanded Saturday hours in the summer, and Sunday hours year-round. During the close of the library due to COVID nineteen, collections and services have been shifted in order to meet the needs of our community through different methods. Immediately after the closing, funds were used to buy additional digital resources, and the collection continues to be built up significantly. Virtual programs were added soon after, including story hour via Facebook, Facebook Live, and adult programs via Zoom. At this time, there are multiple virtual programs being held for all, all ages, beginning on May eleventh. The Watertown Free Public Library was one of the first to begin offering contactless curbside pickup of materials, library patrons, call with their orders and pickups, and are done three times per week. Each of these efforts have proven to be very popular, and will continue during and after the phase reopening. And again, I certainly would be remiss if I didn't mention Ms. Leon Call and her staff and the Library Trustees for their initiative to providing the virtual programs and certainly the curbside pickup of materials. And lastly, moving forward is education. On page ninety-one of the budget message, which goes to ninety-five. Two of the top priorities of the program enhancement expenditure section of the Honorable Town Council's fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget reads as follows: To be is continued support for the Building the Future Initiative, funding and collaboration with the School Committee for the Free Elementary School Project, and for the MSBA High School Project with proposed debt exclusion funding in conjunction with outreach efforts to the community by the School Committee. The second goal is continue to work collaboratively with the Watertown Public Schools to develop a comprehensive, multi-year education budget that assures sustainable funding for our schools and successful education of our children. Seek to accommodate the manager's five percent forecast back in October two thousand and nineteen, and, and conduct further review with the examine the sustainability of five percent increases in fiscal year twenty twenty-two and beyond. Dr. Galston, the Superintendent of Schools, had presented the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget back in the middle, the middle of April. It was a five percent increase over the current appropriation of two point five million dollars. Cite two excerpts from Dr. Galston's message to our community. The first one was that it was developed collaboratively with school and district administrators, curriculum and program coordinators, and the School Committee. The process required every participant to consider the needs of our students, identify outcomes that could be expected from any new resource, and be creative in using the resources available. And the other item that I wanted to cite that Dr. Galston mentioned to our community is, it reads as follows: We appreciate the generosity of the town leaders and the taxpayers of Watertown and the level of financial support provided to our school system. We take our fiduciary responsibility seriously and understand the trust that been placed on our schools to maximize the funding that has been invited to us from the town. Watertown Public Schools greatly appreciates the support of the community and assures our commitment to the success of our schools. Given the impacts of COVID nineteen on the Commonwealth and the town budgets, on June first, the Honorable School Committee considered adjustments totaling over a million to twenty-six thousand dollars from the superintendent's recommended, recommended budget. The Honorable School Committee unanimously adopted a revised fiscal year twenty-one budget of fifty-one million, nine thirty-seven, three fifteen. The submitted fiscal year twenty-one school health insurance appropriation is five million, five ninety-eight, two ninety-three, which is an increase of over three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And included within that appropriation is monies related to projected staffing in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So tonight, Mr. President, members of council, the fiscal year twenty twenty-one school budget continues this town, town's strong commitment to education. The recommended funding tonight for fiscal year twenty twenty-one is fifty-one million, nine thirty-seven, three one five, which is the Honorable School Committee's adopted budget, and it's an increase of one million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight ninety-one over the current fiscal year twenty appropriation. The town's strong commitment to education is further evidence on page twenty-five of the budget mission, message which shows the education appropriation has increased over twenty million dollars from fiscal year two thousand and nine, while other town department appropriations have increased by twelve point two million dollars over the same period of time. The Building for the Future Initiative, the Town Council had the conceptual recommendation, it certainly wanted to continue to support the Free Elementary School Project. Tonight, as a result of timing issues with going to the bond market, falling as a revised timeline for borrowing of one hundred and seventy million dollars for the Free Elementary School Project. The, in fiscal year twenty, so certainly between now and the end of June, will be looking to borrow, in permanently borrow and temporary borrow, the sixteen million, four, five twenty-one, eight ninety-one. That's related to the OPM services and the architect services that were previously approved by council. I mentioned earlier in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, which would be in July of August, is another proposed borrowing of sixty-four million dollars. That's in part related to tomorrow's proposed loan audit over one hundred and three million dollars for the building of a new Coniff and Horsman Schools. Fiscal year twenty twenty-two is another forty-six million dollars. And lastly, in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, there'd be another forty-three and a half million dollars. The projected debt service for the Free Elementary School Project for the first five years of the project, of Three Elementary School Project is as follows: Currently, we're spending a little less than nine hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Fiscal year twenty-one, the proposed budget tonight is almost six and a half million dollars. Fiscal year twenty twenty-two is eight point seven million dollars. Fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-three is twelve point eight million dollars, and fiscal year twenty twenty-four is fifteen point six million dollars. And two more sections. Lastly, the expenditure forecast. The expenditure forecast included within tonight's fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget document has departmental expenditures projected to increase two and a half, two and a half percent annually from fiscal year twenty twenty-two through fiscal year twenty twenty-four. The education appropriation is projected to increase three and a half percent annually from fiscal year twenty twenty-two through fiscal year twenty twenty-four. We look forward to continue working collaboratively with the Watertown Public Schools to develop a comprehensive, multi-year education budget that assures sustainable funding for our schools and the successful education of our children. Lastly, Mr. President, members of the council, this closing, and I appreciate your indulgence tonight. Been a long time coming, submitting the fiscal year twenty twenty budget. Prior to closing, I'd certainly like to thank a lot of folks tonight, the department heads, and certainly in particular, I'd like to thank the two folk, two individuals. The first one is Mr. Tracy, the Town Auditor Assistant, Town Manager of Finance, whose support, invaluable assistance in providing assistance on a very, very challenging budget was very much appreciated, and I want to publicly acknowledge all of his efforts tonight. And then, as I have mentioned several times, this isn't easy, it's a very difficult process, I want to publicly acknowledge and thank my wife Jane for her patience, her understanding, and support for the development of tonight's budget. So, Mr. President, members of council, in closing, the goal of this administration and of all the town departments is to provide the highest level of services to the citizens of Watertown while utilizing the taxpayers' dollars as efficiently as possible. Tonight's submitted budget is balanced and based on sound business practices. I believe the submitted fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget focuses on achieving a long-term goal, a sound financial management and fiscal stability. I look forward to working with the Honorable Town Council and finalizing the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. And as I mentioned at the top of the conversation tonight, we're living in an unprecedented time where our world, our nation and our community is faced with the threat of an international pandemic known as COVID nineteen. All of our town employees are incredibly committed to ensuring the town can safely meet the needs of our community while we're also protecting our employee's safety. All departments have implemented vigorous social distancing and hygiene protocols. We're looking to provide some additional enhancements within the town buildings in advance of fully reopening to the public. And I'm so grateful for all the employees' efforts under difficult circumstances. Certainly very grateful for the members of the Honorable Town Council. They continue to be available to help all of our residents and to provide updates and information to protect the health and safety of our, all the residents of Watertown. And then, lastly, I want to thank all the members of our community for your cooperation and efforts to date and for your continued actions to limit the spread of COVID nineteen. Watertown is a resilient community, and we're all in this together. We will continue to support each other. And stay strong. Watertown strong. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. At this time, we don't have any additional items on our agenda. I just want to make a couple of brief statements. First of all. We are making an attempt this evening. Some of us are in the Watertown Free Watertown Savings Bank. Room in the Watertown Library. So we've all socially distanced and have brought our masks to as we move along. So. We're attempting to start regaining meeting together, which will happen soon, I hope. And I want to thank everyone for being patient. I want to thank, I just want to say that. I want to appreciate all the efforts of the town manager and Mr. Tracy and others. The goal with this coming budget is. Is lawful, lawful where we're not laying off any school employees or any town employees. And I think that's important, given the fact that other cities and towns around us have already sent out layoff notices. And hopefully our local aid and things from that level don't get any worse. But I really appreciate the efforts that have been put out to get this done. And I know. A lot of initiatives that the council put forward are not going to happen this year. But I think it's more important that we maintain the staff that we have to provide. And what I'm going to say is probably going to be additional services around the community as we move forward and reopen. We will have some announcements tomorrow evening about how we're going to proceed with the rest of the budget and when we will be voting on it. So looking forward to seeing everybody tomorrow night. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Can I get a please, Councilor Pichorelli?
Councilor Baze. Yes. Councilor Donato.
Yes.
Councilor Gannon.
Yes.
Councilor Palumbo.
Yes.
Councilor Cunellis. Councilor Felner. Councilor Woodland.
Yes.
Council President Sideras.
Yes, Vice President Pichorelli.
Yes.
Thank you. See you all tomorrow evening.